Welcome, everybody. Like to call the September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two meeting to order. Lisa, will you please call a roll?
Board member Weber.
Here.
Oliverdi.
Here.
Aaron.
Here.
Felton.
Yes.
Walker.
Here.
Rash.
Here.
Chardias.
Here.
Head seven present.
Great, thank you. Can we all please rise for the flag? For allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And so, up first is our approval of our meeting agenda and minutes for tonight, as well as the committee of the whole and regular meeting minutes for September twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Oh, it's a die, thanks. Second. Sorry, sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. And we'll move into our report section. And right away, that brings us to quality in action with middle school principal Leah Borg and Jim Birma, counselor. Hello?
Hi, thank you for having us. And I have been here for a couple of school board meetings to see the elementary teacher or the elementary principals come, and they brought the little ones and they're so cute. And Jim and I came and we did not bring any middle school students with us. And I talked, I talked with Brian Zambrino about that. And one of the reasons is we're, Jim's gonna come up and present the middle school counseling program. And we were thinking, you know, do we bring students? And it's, it's not the greatest thing to be paraded in front of the school board in live TV to be like, I have to go see my middle school counselor. And we talk about being in a friendship group or struggling with social emotional skills. And so just know that we have lots of students that see our counselor. Jim's gonna talk about the lot of, the many delivery methods that we're using. And I also want you to know that we at the middle school had the opportunity to hire two new counselors this past summer. And I'm very excited about both of them. Jim was the counselor that was able to join us tonight. And he'll talk about his partner in counseling, Brooke Wood. But of, of, they're very complimentary to each other. I'm really glad that, that Brooke is working with our sixth and seventh graders. And I'm really glad that Jim is working with our seventh and eighth graders. He'll talk a little bit about that and the transitions that they're gonna do. But just a wide variety of skills, a wide variety of different experiences from both of these counselors. And I'm really excited to let Jim tell you about the program that, programs really that we're delivering. So come on up.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. And I'm so happy to be here to be able to talk about the middle school counseling program. And thank you for having, having me. So first, I wanna talk about Brooke, Ms. Woods. So we're the team and we, everything that we do is about teamwork. And we'll talk more about Better Together. But she is the sixth grade counselor and we split seventh grade and I have eighth grade. So what I'm gonna briefly talk about is our school counseling mission and vision, how we fit into the Better Together theme that comes from their skip program. And we'll talk about the three domains and our delivery methods, delivery options. So first is our mission statement is very simple. Counselors help South St. Paul Middle School achieve their mission. So whatever's the big thing, we wanna be part of the solution. And that is very, and I'll talk more about how that has come up even in September. So some examples that comes from the South St. Paul vision statement is to prepare every student for their next step. So, so Brooke is helping the sixth graders transition to middle school. I will help the eighth graders as they transition to high school so they can select classes that are for them, that work well for them and align with their interests and skills and as well as the social emotional part of that. And the next one is to exemplify the IB learner profile. So we hope that everything we do is geared toward helping all of our students have academic success. And our vision statement is the school counseling program is comprehensive, equity-based, and proactive. And I'm gonna explain each one of those, but I'll start with comprehensive first. And the first part of comprehensive is our domains. We work in the three domains, in the academic, social-emotional, and equity domain, and the college and career domain. And I'd like to give just a few details about that in a moment. But first, I'm gonna talk about our delivery options. So we deliver in six different ways. We work on school-wide programs. For example, October's Bully Prevention Month and we will be part of the leadership team. I'll just, a little bit more later, we will teach classroom lessons on bully prevention. We've actually had some instances where we've had rumors being spread. And so Ms. Borg asked me if, and, and Ms. Wood, if we would go in and give some classroom lessons on stopping rumors. And so we've been into the classroom doing that. We're gonna have small groups. Our small groups can, will be in any of the three domains. In our welcome survey, which I'll talk about in a moment, we'll have, for the military, if we have students in the military, if they choose, we will have students with family members in the military, small groups, as well as academic, small groups, social-emotional, and college and career. We've counseled individuals, so that's what we spend a lot of our time doing. A lot of it has been in the social-emotional domain and, but we'll also be in the academic and college career there. Family partnerships is very big for us. I've made many positive phone calls home. I try to make almost all of my interactions to be positive. One story about that is we had an eighth grade, eighth grader who was struggling in math class. And so I told her that if she could make it through three days and have, we set goals of what she could do, I might make a positive phone call home. And she couldn't, she made it two days, but she couldn't make it three days. So I said, okay, if you can make it one day, I'll make a positive phone call home. And then she did it. We made the positive phone call home, let her talk to her mom on the phone. And since that time, she is just doing a great job. So we really believe family partnerships is important. And transitions, I talked a little bit about that. Transitioning to sixth grade, going into eighth grade, college, eight, going to ninth grade, college. And we've had many new students that come in. And so we try to figuratively wrap our arms around all of them, get them with a student, make sure that they like the school. And I'm, I'm happy to say, all the students really like the school. And I think we're off to a great start. I mean, I'm just so happy to be there. I think we have a very positive learning environment. So the next part is, we have eighteen buckets. So it's the three domains and the six delivery methods. So for example, we have school-wide programs in the academic domain, or family partnerships in the college and career domain. And so we, we're trying to figure out where do we, which one of these buckets do we wanna spend our time in? We went in and taught, we were teaching classroom lessons, which is our introductory lesson. And part of that is the students do a welcome survey. And in that welcome survey, it, it's about eight questions. Do you want support in any of those domains? Do you have a family member in the military? Do you have a staff member that you feel, that you can trust? So we can find out if we have any that don't and we can reach out to those. We're getting staff input. We did a staff presentation and we were like, what do the teachers want the most support with? And we are gonna have an advisory counselor for our school counseling program, which will include students, family members, and staff members. We're proactive. We greet students at the buses when they come in and the walkers when they come at the beginning and the end of the day. We try to be positive. At that time, we, positive presence in the hallways and lunchroom. I try to, Brooke and I try to be out in the hallways as many passing periods as possible. I'm out there more times than not. And we receive staff and family referrals to be proactive, like who needs to be seen. And we're, we are going to dissegregate data to identify students needing the most support in both academics, attendance, and behavior. And we will be disintegrating the data by race, by grade, by subject matter. And so we're look, so that's how we can be proactive. So I wanna talk about Better Together. How do we fit into that? And I'll give you an example. So for a, we, what we call the four-legged chair, it's a student, family members, school counselors, and teachers. So if we have a student who hasn't turned in any work so far, we work with them, we set some goals, we create a couple strategies, where and when are you going to do it? We contact the family member, we let them know. We work with the teachers and with the school counselors and we just try to get that communication together as much as possible. And it is, so we, it's been working really well. I think it's just getting that communication is really important. We also work with the administrators and other staff members. But Better Together, if I could say one thing, that's our biggest part. We're a team. We're a team of counselors, we're a team of teachers, we're a team of administrators. And it's just a great part of collective efficacy that I think has been really great. So in academics, as I said, we create academic goals and we have strategies. We do progress monitoring to see how they're doing. We're helping students with notes. I'm helping with a few students on how to take Cornell notes. And then the last one is differentiation, which is really important. With students struggling in class, in classes, how can we help with the, with the scaffolding process so that they can build up? And then the last one is enrichment. If we have some students who need, who, who are above grade level. And then how can we be part of that team to help the students who are above grade level to be challenged? Social-emotional is where we spend a lot of time in that. And it's, you know, it's great. And like I said, I think we've really been working on the positive learning environment. I'm not gonna go through all of those. But what we, Brooke and I have seen the most is students who are feeling stressed out from the pandemic, from a lot of things. So we're working a lot with stress. We are gonna have bully prevention and it's just gonna be, we're gonna teach everybody, we're working with the web team of three parts. Tell them to stop, help others, and get adult help. And the help others, we're gonna be on that part because bystanders, when we can build a, a climate where, where bystanders are helping each other in bully prevention, it's important. LGPD, LGBTQ support is very important to us. We've had students who have, we, we have students where we've had students call, say the word gay and things like that. And we really wanna be part of that. And, and so we're working with social-emotional equity domain. We're equity-based. So what we're doing is as a staff, we're examining our own cultural and cross-cultural lens and biases. And so already before, I am part of the equity team that was here before. And there, there's a book called Conscious Discipline. It's called The Brain State Model. And it's like examining our own cultural and cross-cultural lens and biases. And we're, we're part of that. And then to build and sustain racial, gender, and ethnic relationships. So we wanna be the champion for all races, for all genders, so that we're doing that. And for our LGBTQ students. And we, we want to work with the parents, make sure, especially our parents from underrepresented populations, help them restore narratives, and how can we co-create with them? And the whole goal is that for all of our students, no matter what their race is, that we have an inclusive and engaging learning. So college and career, which is the last one, is, but not the least important one, is that we hope to help students make informed decisions on possible career paths. So we're not expecting sixth graders to know what they, they're gonna be when they grow up. But we'll have them take career surveys and inventories. For example, they will take a personality type survey. And so if your personality type is X, people have found with that personality type, these careers align with their interests and skills. And that is a lifelong learning skill. And we're gonna do multiple, one, multiple surveys and inventories every year, hopefully grades, at least grades six through twelve. And that they learn how to do this. And that will also help them raise their career awareness and explore those careers. And then the next one is to find the best post-secondary options. So if they wanna be an electrician, then maybe there's a great certificate program that goes for six months, or a two-year program. Or if you wanna be a teacher, a four-year program, or a doctor, you know, that goes beyond four years. We're just trying to let them know, if you wanna be in this profession, here are the best post-secondary options. So we're in the process of choosing or purchasing software. Right now, we have no college and career software at the middle school level. But we're looking to, to change that and get something so that our students can engage in this part of, of what I just described in this, on this slide. So the last one I'd like to say is just Better Together. I mean, I, I will say that Leah and I and other new teachers that start here, so my job was eliminated. I worked at Minneapolis Public Schools when a new superintendent came in July and I freaked out because I didn't have a job. And so then I, I was, so, but it was, there are a lot more job openings than there were school counselors. And so I applied for eleven jobs right away. And I applied, I interviewed at many of them. I came here and I interviewed with Ms. Borg and Mr. Stanky. And I was like, yeah, I wanna be part of that team because I just think they're so wonderful. And they've lived up to my high expectations of Better Together, of how we can do some things. It's just been so great. And so our, our goal as a school, but as, and our school counseling team is that our school is a great place to learn and teach. And I think we're off to a great start.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from the board?
I have a question. How many students are there in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade this year?
We're about, we're at, it varies every day. We're around six hundred eighty-five students right now.
Okay. And what percentage of them are in need of maybe more aggressive counseling?
Six hundred eighty-five. I'm just, I don't know, what would you say?
So Bill, I think what, what Jim is saying is that every student needs to have access to their school counselor. A hundred percent of students need to have access to a school counselor. And that is definitely in the, in those areas of college and career readiness, in those areas of, of planning with the supports and social emotional. We want students to see their school counselor do those push-in lessons. Now, you're at, you're asking what percentage of students might need to have like an individual group? And that's probably along that multi-tiered systems of support. And, and that would probably be, you know, in, in the five percent category.
Well, you know, my, my reason for asking is I'm wondering if everybody is, has the access that they need. And, and then my second question was, you know, if the two of them have enough time to maybe counsel a seventy-eight-year-old. You know, as far as career counseling?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm having trouble deciding what I wanna be when I grow up.
Yeah. We, we definite, yes. We, we definitely.
So I can come and see you anytime?
Yep, any, well, we, we've had family members that have come in and we've talked about this and they've said, hey, can we have some careers? But yeah, I know you're joking, but of course, we're always here, here to help.
I think I'm joking.
And I, but, but we've, I can tell you right now that we've already, just in the month of September, we've already had a hundred, over a hundred referrals of students who, who wanted to talk to us. And some of them are repeats, like we might have one student who asked to see us eleven times. But we've had a hundred, we have had over a hundred referrals so far in September.
When do you, how do you determine like when you're speaking to classes? Do you have an advisory time or do you pick a class? Like, how do you pick, just as the school, when they would come and present to a class?
Well, we have connections, which is like connections time, which is advisory. So Brooke and I have been going in every connection, we just alternate going in. And that's where we're doing our introductory lesson and the students are doing their welcome survey. And so we're going in with that. With, with the rumor lesson that we went in to the Healthy Living's class, like the health class, and we just went in and, so that every eighth grader, for me, every eighth grader went in and got that. But the plan throughout the year is just to, I try to only go in for about half of the class, so I don't take up a whole classroom, just to, but to go into every core class maybe once or twice a year, and then to do the connections. So, but we'll see. I mean, we're, that's all, I mean, we're still trying to, way through the fog of all that, but that's kind of the plan, the plan of that. But we like to, we were hoping that we spend thirty to forty percent of our time teaching classroom lessons.
And I suppose as things pop up, right? In middle school, it's you never know what you're gonna get every day. I'm sure preschool teachers would agree with me on that too, any, any teacher. So, I mean, I, I think that you are looking, and that's why you're so visible at lunch, at, you know, hello time and goodbye time, to kind of look for those opportunities.
Yeah. And, and we do look at, we do look at anecdotal data. And then we also look at some, we pull data that maybe we might not notice as quickly or as, as cognizantly. Like we weekly pull suspension data. And what, you know, what are, we read through the suspension information and what are, what are kids getting suspended for? And what might be going into that? And is there, is there a bigger problem in the building that we need to address that could prevent that? Definitely thinking about, you know, that might be a tier-two or tier-three intervention, but there might be a school-wide intervention that could be applied as well.
Yeah, great.
Do you think the cell phone policy that you implemented this year help, is helped helping with some of that rumor patrol? I mean, are people like, are they passing notes now?
I think that the cell phone plan with cell phones out of kids' hands has definitely changed the, the focus of the students. So last year at this time, we had had a lot of fights in the building. And I believe that with the cell phones out of students' hands, we, we have not had that. And part of that is because it's not video, like nobody can make video of it and then have that social capital on social media. And so that has changed. There are still issues with, with rumors, like Jim was saying. And we also are still having some issues with students having conflict management or conflict resolution around bullying and, and also hurt feelings. You know, is, is it, is it students being mean or is it students being bullied and getting to the, the crux of that too? But yeah, it's, it's definitely happening in person and we are not having the images that go along with, with those things, so.
And probably coping skills too, right? Like learning how to say, meh, does that really matter? And how do you get to that point? I mean, I think that's a life skill.
Having been a principal for eight years, and Jim knows my counselors I work with, they were excellent. And they just serve such a, an important role as part of a, we had a problem-solving team and identifying root causes. But also I think about, it's a unique niche because it's kind of an in-between on a lot of folks, right? So I, I knew if I picked up the phone and said, send that student down to the principal's office, they're coming down in fear of what's gonna happen. Whereas the counselors are that, like, let's, let's hear what's really going on and unpack that a lot can be avoided there for, for adults and kids. So just kind of, let's talk about it, what's, what's the core issue and then figure out, you know, how to bring solutions, so. Super important role. I used to joke with mine, I'd say counselor special. Because it's like something came to me and I'm like, that's out of my wheelhouse. And I love that to know that you have people on your team who have a different training, a different set of experiences, who know how to really talk to a kid about some challenges and in a different way that's just, I think, maybe safer, so.
Yeah. But I also love how they're, have the expertise on finding gifts. And really excited at this young age about the career exploration and having kids think about that, you know? Do they, do they usually? And so I'm really glad that's gonna be an opportunity. You had mentioned the yonder pouches. I might know, you know, a, a random seventh grader who has a, a broken one. And, and those can be replaced again, how?
Yeah. So actually, unfortunately, we had our assistant principals out for, for an extended period of time and is not ill any longer. So he can come to the off, any student that has a broken pouch can come to the office and we can fix that for him and, and fix it just by replacing the pouch. Main office, we can help, but.
Great, is there a replacement fee?
There, if, yes, and it's twenty dollars.
Great, coming out of the birthday fund? Wonderful.
Yes. We, we, we can help.
Right, thank you.
And we do expect random checks will be, I know we're broadcasting to the wide world, but random checks will be starting again tomorrow.
Okay, great, perfect.
The kids are doing great with those. I was there at the end of the day today and it was, if you didn't know, it was, you almost wouldn't notice, they just walk up and like, pop. And you, you hear the magnet grab the device, but it's, it's seamless. I mean, I, I know there was a lot of discussion before they were implemented, but the climate in the building is so positive and, and you can just see, you know, how that being turned off has really helped the kids focus on the learning and those positive things, like you said, that they could talk about. Let's talk about career readiness and things with your counselors and not be distracted by that phone all the time, so.
Yeah, very cool, very excited.
Leah, how many magnets have we lost so far?
We have lost zero magnets.
That's very, very good.
Yeah, I think so too. I don't know how many magnets have been purchased on the World Wide Web and if those magnets work.
Are they available?
I don't know. The ones that I tried to buy over the summer at Menards and Lowe's weren't strong enough, but.
Okay.
I don't know, the internet does amazing things, so. If, if there are any families that are like, there's a really powerful magnet in my kid's room, that might be it. Honestly, it's, if it's at, if it's, you're carrying it in your backpack, things are gonna stick to it and you will, we will notice. It'll also stick to the locker.
When I was there, she shared how many phones they had brought to their tent today and that number was?
One.
One.
One single.
Coming off of a constant power struggle a year ago, right?
Right.
Yeah, so great to hear.
And I just, like, I'm gonna, I said this before when I was here, dream team this year, we've always had a great staff all through, this is the third year that I've been a principal. And the first year I started, we were, it was July first, twenty twenty. And the staff was great, but they were doing things that staff had never been expected to be asked to do. So it was a dream team then too. But the staff is, I feel like it's a dream team and dream scenario where we are in classrooms with students, the students don't have cell phones, and the teaching is happening and it is amazing. And the Better, Better Together slogan was something that the, that Julian and I came up with when we were at a conference in, over the summer about like, we finally are together and we are better because of it. And let's really capitalize on that. We're better because we have two fantastic counselors. We're better because we have all these students in the classrooms. We are better because we're gonna work with families. And we're better because we are all gonna support each other. And so I'm just, I'm super excited for this, this year to continue. We talked, was it just today about how we're already one month down and, you know, eight and a half to go? And it's just, we're gonna keep rolling in the right direction, so thank you very much.
Great, thanks for coming.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Moving on to the public listening session. And there were no public listening session submissions to date. And then to Vice Chair Rash to talk about what we discussed in committee of the whole.
Sure. So prior to every board meeting, we have our committee of the whole meetings where we do a lot of the business work of being board members. That's when we're reviewing a lot of reports, information. This one, we had representative from the city to give us an update on the library and the construction that we are starting to see in the community and updates and timeline, roadways, with some key contact information. And we had a lot of numbers work tonight, so talking about some things that you're gonna hear about coming up, whether that's bond refunding, education foundation lease, property tax levy, components around that. And then also discussing the various committees that we sit on.
Great, thank you for that. And moving on to Dr. Zambrino, bringing us highlights.
All right. Well, thank you, Chair Diaz. I know they're working to get the slide deck up, but I'll just reiterate kind of what you, you heard out of the middle school. And it's really out of all of our buildings. I've been in the buildings a lot and every time I walk through, they look good, they sound good, they feel good. And, you know, that's acknowledging that last year was a challenging year. I mean, everywhere, not unique to hear you've heard me say that, I think, before. The, the pause and the time to reset, some of the intentionality, we talked about, we heard that term dream team. And all the principals have been working with their teams and they just had such a positive, great start to the year. And I so enjoy our kids, just interactions with the kids. I was sharing with some, I was at the secondary building and boys came up to me like, you look really good in that suit. You know what I mean? I don't even know who these kids are. So I'm like, all right, well, thanks. So I'll take a compliment. I don't, you know, I don't get those every day, so. Just fun that they were, their willingness to engage you and the curiosity our kids show and the positivity in their interactions. And so it's been really fun. Obviously, the big, biggest piece kind of in the near future is the upcoming election season. I'm just looking to see if we're rolling here, not quite yet. I'll just talk it through, that's not a problem. So we have an operating levy on the, on the ballot this year. And I think what I wanna make sure everybody hears and knows is that an operating levy really is a learning levy. And so just, if I were to make it as simple as I possibly could, it is for the kids in the classrooms.[1789.02] It is not for stuff, bricks and mortars, like those kind of capital projects, bonding, those pieces. It is really truly a learning levy, and so it's about the kids. There are two questions on the ballot, so the first question is asking for taxpayers to consider revoking our current operating levy and replacing it with a $900 increase. The cost on that one on the average home is less than a dollar, a dollar a day, so that's the cost that people can look. But on our website, people can log in and access where you could put in what you think your own home value is to see what that is. And then if question one passes, there's an opportunity to add $250 more. So question one will help us narrow the funding gap. So the state of Minnesota has not been funding schools at the rate of inflation. And so there's been this growing gap between what we call the general formula allowance, the per pupil dollar we get from the state, has not kept pace with inflation, and so what that's caused is then local districts to look within and ask taxpayers for operating dollars. And so South St. Paul has a long history of that, that's why we currently have an operating levy. But that pace of growth or expense to run a school district has just outpaced what the funding has from the state. And then we're looking at with that second question, what are some of the additional pieces that people are interested in? So I've heard a lot since it came in around performing arts, we'd like to see more access to performing arts at an earlier age. We'd like to see more hands-on learning and career pathway development. So a number of things that we're looking that we could add, social, emotional, and academic support. Our kids, we talked about what a great year, just I'm super optimistic about our academic outcomes. They did take a bit of a bump during the pandemic, as did everyone in the state and nationally. So again, not unique to here, but we need to address that and give our kids the best possible opportunity. There is an upcoming community information meeting at Capoja on Monday, October 3rd, so this coming Monday at 6:30. So I will be there to share information as well, some members of my team. And if people had questions, I think there might be some of the school board there, I can't remember with all the engagement events, but we'll be present and there to answer questions and make sure people have good information. Most important thing is, we want people to be well-informed and to get out and vote so that they can make the best choice for themselves. On the ballot as well, we have four open seats on our school board, and so we have 22 residents who filed candidacy, so lots of interest and excitement around what that looks like. And both of those happened on November 8th. Again, if you're looking for information on our school board candidates or on the operating levy, the learning levy, that is available on our website, you can review candidate profiles, you can find voting locations. All that information is really readily available at our website, sspps.org. We shared earlier in our committee updates, one of our partners is the Educational Foundation, so they have been great partners. They actually helped us purchase Packer Pride signs. We know that a few years ago, there was a fun excitement around getting a Packer Pride sign and getting that in people's yards. So we have made a really beautiful, the Net Childs helped us make a lovely one, it's got a little pop of yellow in there this time around. So the foundation did cover the cost of those, and they're available at all of our schools or the district office. And then the ask is just if people have the resources to make a minimum recommended donation of $5 back to the foundation. So we just didn't want it to be a barrier for anybody to have access to show that Packer Pride, but knowing that the foundation does a lot to support our schools, that if people are able to give that contribution back, that's great. And then we have asked people if you get a picture of that, to post that on social media with hashtag Packer Pride, so we can kind of see where they're popping up, get pictures of the kids or families in front of those Packer Pride signs. So again, available at all of our sites or the district office. There yet on the slide deck? Other things going on, just to highlight, we do a lot, we talk a lot about our schools, but we are committed to being engaged partners with our entire community. So we have, at Central Square, we have our Senior Center Social coming up. So for those who aren't aware, there's a senior center for residents 55 and older to participate. And they have lots of activities, like they did a trip to Lake Geneva, they're doing a number of engaging activities, and they play cards and all kinds of different things to keep our seniors engaged and having fun in the community. So they're celebrating Oktoberfest on Thursday, October 6th at 11:30, 11:30 to 1 at Central Square. They also, we also offer adult basic education courses there. So we have new courses offered this year around civics and citizenship to help folks learn English and prepare to pass their citizenship test, and then a healthcare career prep course. So that information is available on our website at communityed.sspps.org. It's always nice to highlight the ways we don't just support our pre-K-12, but as Jean Zender would say if she were here, birth to earth, so we want to work with our community at all ages. So commend her team for all the work they do. This week is homecoming week, so there was the dance on Saturday. I heard, I talked to Principal Chock, he mentioned there were 400 students in attendance. He said, zero issues, the kids were great, and he said, well, what he really enjoyed, he said, often, the dance will start at, let's say, 8:00, and then by 8:30, kids are leaving. And he said, the window was so long before any kids started to leave, and he said they just were having so much fun, and the behavior was so positive, so that was great to start. And then they're doing some activities throughout the week, so they, today had backyard games. On Wednesday, we have the coronation, so we'll pick the homecoming court. And then, of course, Friday is the big game against Hastings. And they're dressing up every day in the school this week, so fun to always see the staff and students having fun with kind of that homecoming spirit week. Mentioned the homecoming court, there are 12 students that were nominated as Royals, and then they'll pick four to be the homecoming royalty, I guess, if I'm getting the term right. Mentioned the Walk-a-thon earlier, the Educational Foundation had the Walk-a-thon last week. What a beautiful day it was for that, it was like, perfect, if you ask me. It wasn't hot, it wasn't cold, it was cool enough in the shade that you want to get moving, so folks were eager to get going. And that was a really fun experience for me. I had the megaphone was dead, so I had to use my old teacher voice to say, ready, set, goes! But the kids were so fired up to get going, and a lot of fun. And that's a great fundraiser that, again, supported our classrooms there. And then Tri-District CAPS have kicked off, so I just had some notes here for myself so I can remember. So Tri-District CAPS, again, that's the Center for Advanced Professional Studies. That's our partnership with Inver Grove, West St. Paul, and our district. And we have four program areas, so students can participate in business and entrepreneurship, computer science and IT, healthcare, and transportation and skilled trades. So they kicked off, and their big ideas were around how to come back and contribute to the school communities where they are and make a more positive community. We have 110 students in the CAPS program, they call them associates, so they're actually called CAPS associates, and they're from all of the member districts' high schools. And they are learning about, they're learning the basics of human-centered design and design thinking to put their new skills into action. So excited to have that partnership, I did speak to that desire in our community for kids to have hands-on and career-based learning opportunities, so excited about that Tri-District CAPS partnership. As always, you can follow us on all of the social media, we have Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and LinkedIn, so please look us up and find us on there, and we'll always be kicking out updates on things that are going on. Important dates, we have homecoming this week, as I mentioned. I also mentioned October 30, again, next Monday, the information session around our learning levy at Capoja at 6:30. A reminder that there's no school on October 14th and as well as the 20th and 21st for MEA. Meeting materials available on our website, always great things. Our website is really, again, I said it before I came into the district, I was so amazed by it, and they've even made it better. So always look to the website for the latest and greatest on South St. Paul.
Yay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So much, so much happening. Okay, moving on to consent items. Do I have a motion for the approval of our consent item, which, our consent items which include bills payable, claims, and our staffing report?
So moved.
Thank you, second. Great, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thanks. All right, moving on to our business items. Looking for an approval to approve the 22, 23 miscellaneous wages. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? Fantastic.
Chair Diaz, we're a little out of order, I don't, we could, why don't we do, yes, if we want to.
We're out of order.
Oh, forgot, policy review again!
It actually is the first, it actually is.
Business, is it?
Business items went up.
Yeah.
Approval of the miscellaneous wages.
Aren't?
Yeah, you're right.
You know, and I think it got shifted, that's my ear, my apologies.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I'm looking at one that has it out of the order.
All right, well, good.
Depends on which one you're looking at.
Well, we'll get to it either before or right now. So we did motions, no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Great, moving on to the resolution approving employment of the board member as a substitute in a classified position in the school district. Do I have a motion to move this resolution for approval?
So moved.
Great, second.
Second.
Any discussion? And Lisa, can you call that roll?
Board Member Walker.
Yes.
Rush.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Lallaberty.
Yes.
Arndt.
Yes.
Felton. And Chair Diaz.
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
Thank you, and that motion carries. And I'm looking for a motion to approve the acceptance of gifts resolution. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion?
Think it would be nice to highlight, as I understand, this is from Walzer Subaru, made a very generous donation of $10,000 to support curriculum as well as supplies and materials for our classroom teachers at Capoja Elementary, so I'm excited about that.
Yeah, so generous.
Big, big thank you to that.
Great, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Roll call for resolution.
Oh, sure, oh, yeah, I see, resolution at the end. Uh, let me go back. Lisa, will you please call a roll?
Board Member Felton.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Rush.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Lallaberty.
Yes.
Arndt.
Yes.
Chair Diaz.
Yes.
Seven yeas.
You know, when I'll get this right, on my last meeting, that's when I'll be like, spot on, perfect.
That's why we have Lisa, that makes.
Right.
That's why we got backup.
Okay.
Together, I think, was the theme we heard earlier, you know?
So the next item is for approval, is to approve the lease amendment number three between South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District 6, and South St. Paul Educational Foundation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thanks, any discussion? Great, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. Moving on to approve the resolution stating the intention of the school board to issue general obligation school building refunding bonds, Series 2021A, and taking other actions respect thereto. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? I think Finance Director Brady Hoffman is here for some discussion.
Good evening, we have Jody Zesba here from Ellers, she's our financial advisor, and she's gonna hit a couple high points on this refunding.
Great, welcome.
Perfect, thank you. So we talked about this in detail at the Committee of the Whole, but I'll just make some overall comments for the community's benefit. So the refunding for bonds is similar to refinancing a home mortgage. So the difference is, you can't keep the savings for your budget. So the savings has, have to be passed back to the taxpayers in the form of lower debt service levies. So you're not able to use this to meet the needs of the things that you're asking for as part of the operating referendum, but it will be savings to the taxpayers, which will be great. These refunding bonds relate to the voter-approved issuance from May 21st of 2013, so quite a while back when these bonds were issued, and at the time, they were split into two different authorities. So the first bond issue under this authority was in 2013 and had a call date of February 1st of 2022. We refinanced those bonds last year when rates were at historic lows and were able to save $1.8 million in debt service tax savings. So that was very exciting. This bond issue is a little bit smaller, was $10 million, rates have come up, but we're still expecting to capture just shy of about $400,000 for the taxpayers. So that will be great. The next steps then are the resolution that you have before you tonight. We'll go through the bond rating process like we do each time you issue bonds. We'll issue an official statement, and we'll take competitive bids for this bond sale on October 19th, and then bring you the results at your October 24th board meeting.
Great, great, thank you so much.
I was just gonna say, lots of technical information in there, but for anyone who's listening at home, I hope they're just kind of hearing the work that this board and this administration is working to do in partnership with Ellers to maximize resources. And this case, as she said, the dollars don't come to us, actually go back to taxpayers, which we're excited about as well. So $1.8 million last year, and looking at potentially another $400,000, so, you know, $2.2 almost million that this board's able to work to save our community, so it's great news.
Thank you.
Good speaking.
Thank you.
Thanks for saying that.
Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Board Member Arndt.
Yes.
Felton.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Rush.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Lallaberty.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jody.
And the last item for approval is to approve certifying the 2022 payable 2023 proposed property tax levy to the maximum and declare Monday, December 12th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in the City Hall Council Chambers at 125 Third Avenue North in South St. Paul as the official public hearing to certify the 2022 payable 2023 final property tax levy. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Great, and Brady is here for some discussion.
Yes, so we reviewed this with the school board here in the Committee of the Whole this evening. So this is an annual thing that all school boards have to do on an annual basis, is certify your proposed property tax statements. This needs to be done by September 30th to the county, and this is what generates those initial proposed property tax statements and the amounts that are included there. We are asking to certify the maximum, so this allows for adjustments in the formulas and these calculations. It's 39 pages of detailed calculations that roll up and create the total levy. So this just allows to make sure we're able to maximize those dollars through this tax levy process. Truth Taxation statutes do require that we hold a public hearing, and that is at the December 12th meeting during our Truth of Taxation hearing, at the conclusion which the public will be able to speak, and then the school board will have to certify the final taxes by the end of December. So this is where we are, it's an annual piece, this is the initial process that kicks off the tax cycle for the pay 23 property taxes.
Great, thank you. Board members, any discussion? Lots of discussion at Committee of the Whole. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion also carries. That was a lot to get through, we did talk about a lot. Now we're on to board member reports and committee updates, where we've seen a passion. Wendy, why don't you start us off?
Okay, when we talk about seeing a passion, as I had talked about at our last board meeting about class reunions, my graduating class, class of '75, we had our 65th birthday party celebration, and it was a fun event. We had approximately 50 classmates literally came from around the country to this. So we will be starting to plan our 50th class reunion within the next year to a year and a half. And also, graduating class of 1977, they had their class reunion this past Friday also. So reunions are very popular, especially this time of year, right around the homecoming season. That's when a lot of classes want to specifically plan their class reunion. Also, the graduating class of 1971, they are also planning their class reunion, which will be coming up shortly here. They're doing a three-day event, they are having their celebration banquet at the country club. They will be having a meeting for just social event at the Croatian Hall. And they also are having a tour of the high school. Since it's been, obviously, a long time since, you know, they've been in the high school also, they want to take a tour of the building, so they're looking forward to that. And they can go on a website and get more information, which is also listed on the Educational Foundation website under class events, so you can always look up interesting things on that website. And I too want to say just a thank you to everyone who participated in the Walk-a-thon last week. Special thank you to our new director, Beth Skora, and Sharon and Terry that helped to arrange everything there, and all those that assisted them at the secondary building that late. the secondary building that late afternoon, it was a wonderful event. And I too am looking forward to the homecoming game this Friday night, definitely will be there, supporting our teams and activities, and look forward to seeing that event. And as Dr. Zambrino had mentioned earlier, about the Senior Center at Central Square, which I serve on that Board of Directors also, the next fun event, which will be after our Oktoberfest, which is next Thursday, we are having our Senior Center Fashion Show, which is on the last Wednesday in October, so if anyone is interested in attending that event, please contact Linda Jacobs Buse at the Central Square, and she can give you more information, and you can get registered up for the Senior Center Fashion Show, which I have been a model for the last several years. So, it is, it is a very fun event, it starts at 11 o'clock during the day, and there's a catered lunch in there, so it is a very, very nice event, thank you.
Great. Mr. Walker.
Just a couple things that we've seen since the last meeting, that all the homecoming activities that have been going on this week to be culminating in the game on Friday, it's been really fun to watch all of that going on, and the passion, we talk about passion, the Walkathon generates so much, you know, we think part fundraiser, but it's gone so far beyond that now, yes, it does raise funds, but everyone has so much fun with it, it's really fun to watch, the kids get so excited, in our neighborhood anyway, coming around, telling you about it, and asking for some help, and it's great to see, you see that passion in their eyes, and so, it's really a great event, and fun to be a part of. And other than that, I would just encourage everyone to remember that the referendum is coming up, and to make sure that you have all of the information that you need, and as has been mentioned already tonight, the school website has a wonderful section devoted to it that has anything that you would need to know about the referendum, just make sure you're informed, and come out to vote in November.
Nothing at this time. Thanks. I just wanted to thank Principal Borg and Counselor Birma for coming and presenting today, I think it's always good to highlight the, all the supports that kids have in schools, so I thought that was such a great presentation, and also, just to highlight that I have three "vote yes" signs in the trunk of my car, if anybody would like some. Your turn.
I just, you know, clearly, much of the board's focus right now is wrapped around the learning levy, but I also want to thank everyone in our committee, our community, who is working so hard to get out information in relation to the levy, and sort of delivering on that promise to the kids of now, even if their kids are no longer in school, I just, the amount of support and the warm welcome, and the hope around our community, around our kids, has been really touching, so, thank you for all that work around that.
Great, one more.
Fantastic, well, I am, along with the homecoming events, looking forward to On the Road Again, which will be this weekend, I will be there at the school district table, probably once again clad in all Packer gear.
That's all you have now, right?
That's really like...
Makes getting dressed really easy.
It just keeps growing, it's amazing, and so, yes, I'm looking forward to that, I'm looking forward to seeing everybody in the community, it's always one of my favorite events of the year, in South St. Paul. And yeah, so that's gonna be, so that's gonna be super fun. Early voting is now open, so if you care to, like, you know who you're going to vote for in all of your statewide and local elections, it is open, if you have any questions about where you vote, are you registered, how to request an absentee ballot, mnvotes.org is the website that you can go to, and it will answer every single voting question that you probably can have, and if it doesn't, then there's a phone number to the Secretary of State's office, and you can call them and ask them all of your questions. So, voting is open, it's exciting, and, yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
Great. Bill?
Well, I was fortunate enough to take in the South St. Paul home football game last weekend, and the bad news was it rained, and the good news was I didn't melt. And also, in my travels last week, I said if people would call, would watch, you know, our televised, I would give a shout-out, and I found six people to shout-out to, so I'm just gonna call first names, Colleen, Megan, Maria, Patrick, Leah, and Robin, that's my shout-out.
Great, well, thank you. That is all for tonight, so I'd like to call the Monday, September 26, 2022, oh no, no, it would've been really great to be that easy. Let me go to my notes. It does, the thing is to, okay. Great. We are moving into a closed session, I forget how to do this, right, I could say that. Yeah, moving into a closed session per the Open Meeting Law, Statute 13D03.03, for Labor Negotiation Strategy and Review of a Tentative Agreement with the Custodial Bargaining Unit. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thanks.
Second.
Wonderful discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, and that motion carries, we're moving into a closed session. So big.
Good job. Well done.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.
Alrighty.